I'd like to welcome you to the work session on September 7, 2023. We call to order and the pledge of allegiance will be done by our new vice chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always admired Ms. Sharp because every time she had a moment of silence, she always had somebody to have a moment of silence for. I would like to take this opportunity to let us all think about Ms. Sharp and what she's about to face, and please remember her in your moment of silence. Do we have any questions or comments on the agenda? Questions or comments on the agenda? If there are no questions or comments on the agenda, do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, one thing that I would like to bring up, you'll see this every year, we discuss it every year, you're going to see a lot of Eagleville for junior pro soccer, and that is where our county rec director works at Eagleville, and so we run county rec soccer and county rec basketball. You'll start seeing these the next couple of months as the season gets in, but it all runs through Eagleville, just for ease of books.
We will begin the agenda. Dr. Sullivan, number eight.
So number eight, RCS and Special Kids Contract, Tab Two, contractual agreement with Special Kids Incorporated. This contract with Special Kids Incorporated is for special education-related nursing services. These services provide speech, language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and nursing services to Rutherford County students in special kids facilities. Hourly rates for therapy are $82.50 per hour. Daily rates for nursing services are $185 per day. The total cost not to exceed $45,000 during the 23-24 school year and be paid out of the GP's special education funds.
Do we have any questions or comments about item number eight?
I'm just so thankful that we have that partnership with them. They are really doing God's work out here, and I just couldn't be more excited about continuing that agreement.
Anyone else? Number nine, Dr. Sullivan.
All right, number nine, financial matters. This request is to fund 10 additional ESL teaching positions in order to bring RCS in compliance with the state of Tennessee ESL requirements. The Tennessee Department of Education requires a staffing ratio of 35 to 1 for English as a second language students, and RCS is not meeting this ratio in relation to the total number of ESL students to teachers. This funding will be derived from an increase in TISA revenue to support new student enrollment. And just to give you an update of where we are today compared to last year, last year we ended the year, and so when you're talking about English as a second language, we have a couple categories that are included. We have ELL, which English Language Learners, these are students receiving direct instruction. You have Transition 1 and Transition 2. Those are students who just passed their WITA assessment within the last two years. So each year that you add on, if a kid passed it last year, they're considered a T1 and they still count for our EL code. T2, two years, we actually, the state goes on and does T3 and T4, but our staffing ratio isn't determined based on that. So just our ELs, T1s, T2s, and parents who withdrew. Last year, we finished with 6,059. As of today, we're at 6,836. So another 12.8% increase. If you include our T3s and T4s, these are students again who have tested out in the last three or four years, with T3s, we have an additional 395, and with T4s, we have an additional 365. So over 7,500 of our students are either in English language or have tested out in the last four years. We budget different positions for English as a second language. We did this last year as well, because it's easy for us to come back and have a direct impact of a, to see how many students do we add above what we expected, and 10 will get us right into compliance. Whether or not we can actually fill those, I'm not sure, but this will get us to the 10 positions. Our current ratio as today is 1 to 38, and 10 positions brings us to 193 teachers, and that'll be 1 to 35.
Dr. Sullivan, what is the likelihood that we're going to find those teachers?
Decent. We're in better shape than we have been, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. We're continuing to see our numbers dwindle as far as certified openings come, so thank you to our principals and HR department, because it is in, it's in really good shape comparatively.
Any questions or comments about item number nine?
Thirty-five to one ratio, but where do we typically try to keep those students?
So they are supposed to be in a classroom of under 15, but 35 to one is what the state requires you to have serve, and you know, your T1 or your T2 students don't actually come to an ESL class, they're just monitored, and so those T1s and T2s are included in that 1 to 35. That's not in one period of classroom, that's how we staff it. Great question.
Is there more schools that are in need of more ESL versus other schools?
Yeah, so we watch our ESL enrollments daily at the beginning of the year, but we transfer half positions or full positions to be able to match them. Dr. Chastain, I know we're looking at the high school level, can you pull that list up? I knew that's where you were going. I know that Stewart's Creek High School will have one, Riverdale will have one. Turnover, Dr. Chastain, if that's all right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Talk amongst yourselves. And we actually budgeted for 10 additional positions at the beginning of the year. We released an additional 10 through ESRA funding, and so these are 10 additional ones that we're continuing to grow with our ESL population.
So the eight that we are looking to release are Christiana Middle, Laverne High School, Laverne Middle, Rock Springs Middle, Rocky Fork Middle, Oakland Middle, Stewart's Creek High School, and Riverdale High School. And then that would leave us with two additional positions. She was looking at those numbers to see where we need to put those next.
Thank you, Dr. Chastain. Anyone else?
So we're still seeing the enrollments for ESL populations increasing, just as much as there were last year, the same time last year, is this the same time period?
It's actually a little bit less, so we're more back on trajectory. So in '21, we had a 12.6% increase. Great numbers, by the way, Dr. Chastain. Amazing work. 2022, we had a 19.7% increase, and then 2023 is 12.8 as of right now. That will increase, I imagine it's going to be somewhere between the 12 and 20.
So are we seeing more of the high schoolers coming, or kids that are older versus the younger?
I think it looks.
Got you. So we have, currently, I thought you would find this interesting, that we have 1,180 students that are considered newcomers, so those are students that have been here less than 12 months, so that's a pretty high number. Actually, our highest enrollment of students by grade level is first grade with 644 students. So it truly doesn't really follow a trend, it kind of is just up and down throughout the grade levels. High school is overall lower than elementary.
Which you would expect, because kids are going to exit the program as they go through EL.
We're still seeing the challenges with the older kids that are coming, that there's a huge education gap, and it's hard for them to catch up, but they have to be in high school, and so it's really hard for them to get caught up and be on grade level to graduate on time. Are we still having that problem?
That is definitely a problem in the high schools specifically, because if they are a student that has lacked formal education of any kind, and there's large gaps in terms of what they even know in their home language, so then you add to that the fact that they're here under bad circumstances sometimes, and they don't even have a grasp of content or their home language, and then we're asking them to learn in English, so that is obviously a problem that you see compounded by the time they get to high school. We have, I will give our ESL team tremendous credit, they've been working for several years to try and try to find reasonable and good solutions that are the best thing for the student, the family, and our schools, so that is still a challenge, but, and the other, the other challenge is for students that have been within our EL program for several years, and they may have a good working conversational English, but lack some of that academic language, so that's a problem for us too, that our ESL team is working on some curriculum for that.
Maybe not right now, because this is not about this, but maybe it'd be a good idea to kind of look into this more deeply and kind of present to us those challenges that you're taught, referring to, and kind of provide to us the solutions and what the impacts, the overall impacts are, because if they're having problems with catching up, what is the graduation rate impacting that and how we're solving that? So it'd be great to know those kind of things, those details.
We might like to hear from Ms. Turnbull. We haven't really gotten to meet her as well as we would like to, and so it'd be nice, it doesn't have to be done, you know, but.
About Thursday.
Please don't do that to me. But sometime, Dr. Chastain, maybe you could have a little presentation for us. Any other questions or comments? Number 10.
All right, number 10, Human Resources, Tab Three. So we have Wes Dozier from Gallagher. He is here to present some insurance options to the board for 2024 here at our work session. I was a little worried, I didn't see you over there hiding back there, Wes, so. Everybody has a copy of the presentation already, the new and updated one, so.
Thank you all for allowing me to be here today. I get to talk about everybody's favorite topic, which is health insurance, you know, specifically some of the rates and things like that, so we'll dive right in. I've not been in front of y'all before, my name's Wes Dozier, I'm the area vice president with Gallagher Benefit Services. We are employee benefits brokers, so we work with roughly 80 of the 146 public schools, school systems in the state of Tennessee. Public sector business is everything that we do. We serve in the capacity as your voluntary benefits broker. We also do a lot of work with the Human Resources Department and just support your benefits programs overall. Today specifically, I'm here to talk about the medical insurance rate contribution strategy. Even though we're talking about the state health insurance plan, I don't represent the state, but over the years, we've done a lot of work with groups on helping them figure out what their contribution strategies need to be. So that's what we're talking about, just the contribution strategy. Everybody may know the history here, but just to make sure if there's any, the new members, kind of want to walk back through 2022 real quick. Rutherford County Schools historically has always been on self-funded medical plan with the county government, and after, you know, a lot of consideration last year and early '22, the vote was made to move to the state plan for a January 1, 2023 effective date. During that evaluation process, with it taking place at the beginning part of 2022, that included the rate contribution, those were set as well, and I believe that that was voted on in around the April or May timeframe. Gallagher actually started working with Rutherford County Schools in the October timeframe, so we kind of came on a little bit later. That was right in the middle of the open enrollment season, so we just hopped right in there with your benefits team and went out to the schools and helped do, you know, face-to-face education about the changes there. Now we're in January of 2023, so the insurance has been effective. Rutherford County has continued to build out their benefits team to support the state medical plan, because they require a certain number of what they call ABCs, Agency Benefit Another thing that's happened in 2023, of course, is y'all have gone your salary, undergone your salary study, and of course, I know y'all made some significant increases in not just teacher pay, but pay across the board, so, you know, want to give you guys kudos for doing that. We want to make sure our teachers are, and support staff are all paid well, and I know those went into effect at the beginning of July. In May, we actually started to kind of do an evaluation of the health insurance increases. Of course, budget, that's the budget season, so you have to do some estimates until the rates, you know, they come out with the rates, and then the rates usually come out around the June, July timeframe. But we started looking at the contribution strategy, because again, if you go back a year, since then, of course, there's a new superintendent, there's a new finance director as well, so I think everybody wanted to look at, you know, how did we get here? You know, how are the, why are the rates what they are? Of course, that's a history of being on a self-funded plan and then making the move to the state, but since it was new people, we wanted to take a fresh look at the contribution strategy. So we've looked at a lot of different options. There's been three or four different iterations of, hey, here are the different scenarios, each time getting a little bit closer to what we thought would accomplish the goal of offering great health insurance, but also you've got to do that within, you know, within the budget, especially in a year where you do a lot of salary increases. So I do believe that we've identified, you know, one main thing, which is the majority of the state, actually, they base their budget off of the base plan, you know, not necessarily the expanded plans, so I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. I think it's important to have a good understanding, real quick, of just the high level of the state plan itself, because that will play into some of the logic, you know, when we're looking at the different options. But the state has four different plans, going from the most expensive and the richest plan, kind of down the ladder to the least expensive. So you have the premier plan, the standard plan, the limited plan, and the consumer-driven health plan. After you pick what plan you want, then the employees have the option of two different carriers, and each carrier has two networks. They have a base network and an expanded network. So the expanded networks with Blue Cross and Blue Shield are the P network with Signet's, the Open Access network, and of course, in an expanded network, those, those plans are going to cost more because of the expanded network. The base plans are Blue Cross and Blue Shield S and Local Plus. Those are still very good networks, but they are a little bit more budget-friendly. And then at the end, of course, you have, who do you want covered in your family, employee only, employee, spouse, employee children, and family coverage. So one of the things that we noticed when looking at the rate structure was that currently Rutherford County Schools pays the same percentage amount towards the expanded plan and towards the base plans. So of course, if a plan is more expensive and you're paying the same percentage, of course, that's going to be more to not only the county budget, but it's also more to the employees themselves. I mentioned a minute ago, the base network is not a, it's not a lesser network, it's just a little bit more narrow, and because of that, the rates are a little bit less cost. It does not, network does not change the benefit itself. So the plan benefits on the premier, the standard, the limited, and the CDHP. Whether you choose the S network with Blue Cross or whether you choose the P network, the benefits of the plan, what it pays and what it covers, are exactly the same. The only difference is on the network, who's in and out of the network. I think one of the things that kind of reiterates that point is if you look at the next slide, if you look at the state chart itself, when they publish the chart, they publish the rates based off of the base network. So this chart shows the 2023 rates, it also shows the 2024 rates, and it breaks it down by plan, by tier. So you see the dollar amount that it's increased, and you also see the percentage amount that it's increased. And then the way that they communicate what the differential is, what the expanded networks are, that's the note down at the bottom, where they just tell you, okay, same plans, but if you want the expanded network, this next year, it's either going to be $85 for employee plus children, or the 150 additional there.
Wes, if you don't mind, so something I like to point out here is that up until moving to the state plan, I don't know when it was, probably a decade or so ago, the board and just the district chose not to offer spouse coverage any longer if someone, if their spouse had coverage. Of course, going to the state plan, we now offer spouse coverage again, but you'll see that's where the largest increase is, just proportionally, and I think that follows industry standard. If you want your spouse those insurance options available, then you're going to have to pay for it. So when you see a 9% increase, that's truly someone choosing to do that.
Yep. And this has been a pretty common theme on the state plan for the last several years. The employee plus spouse tier has, has been the one that's got the biggest amount of the increase. Now, of course, you know, Rutherford County or anybody, you know, administration, nobody has control over the rates or what the rate increase will be, so that brings us back to the conversation at hand, which really is, you know, from a budget perspective, you know, from all the different, you know, things that go into it, how do we, as a school board, want to split the increase this year between the employees? Last thing before we go into the different scenarios that are modeled out, is just a quick screenshot of Davidson County and Rutherford County. The provider by provider, or you know, doctor by doctor listing is too big. All of this information is out on the Tennessee Partners for Health website, but this was the facilities, right, or the main hospitals, and whether they're in or out of network, in the yellow shading in the middle, you have the base networks, and then on the right-hand side, you have the expanded work, and those are the hospitals in Davidson County and Rutherford County. Any questions before I go into the six different scenarios? I promised I'd take less than two hours. I'm kidding, that's, that's the only joke I have. All right, so you can kind of toggle back and forth between the six different scenarios, and then the slide behind that is the overall budget scenario, right, and of course, they follow each other. First, of course, we take a snapshot in time, you know, 2023, who's participating in what plan, what are you contributing towards that, what are the employees paying towards that? So on the budget slide, that's the very first row, is what are we doing today and how are we splitting up the rates? Then in the six different scenarios, the way that they're listed, scenario one is what we call proportional. So proportional just means whatever percentage that we're paying today for the 2023 plans, we just take the same percentage, we don't change it, and we apply that to the new 2024 rates. So proportional is basically keep doing what we're doing, split the increase based on that current percentage. To the budget, the impact to Rutherford County Schools would be about a $2.6 million impact to just keep doing what we're doing, which is a proportional split of the benefits.
And if you're looking on that chart, guys, so you'll look at the insurance cost, that second column, you'll see right now is the 56, and then every one of the options next is 59.8, 59.8. Those numbers don't change, because that's how much the insurance is going to cost, and where he's looking at that 2.6 is the second column to the end, employer budget change. So all of them cost us more except for the last one, but you'll see how the numbers decrease as we go on.
Yep. Now, that's, that's great feedback on how to read the chart. That is a good place to go as well, so if you're looking at the budget chart, as Dr. Sullivan mentioned, you see the cost for insurance at $59 million and 800 and some change, it's all staying the same. The next column, HRA, HSA, y'all contribute towards the HSA plan for people that participate in what they call the consumer-driven health plan, so that column is showing the amount of money that you, as a district, are contributing into the employees' HSA accounts on their behalf. And then, of course, that totals up in the third column. The, the middle columns are where you start to see the changes, because again, these are the different scenarios where we start to say, you know, how much of the increase are we going to be able to take versus how much are we going to pass on? So each one of these scenarios kind of just stair steps all the way down from one end of the spectrum to the other end of the spectrum. And then you've got the total budget change and the percentage on the far right-hand side. So after you get through at the baseline, scenario number one, we talked about is the proportional, and I'm going to skip all the way to number six so that you understand what midpoint means. So if you go to the other extreme, all the way to scenario six, this is where we say, you know, we as a district are not going to be able to absorb any of the increase, and we're going to pass that off to the employees. I'm not saying that's what we've talked about, I'm just painting, you have to have the two extremes of what the options are. So the midpoint is the midpoint between those two, between what are we doing today, keeping the same percentages, and what if we just passed 100% of the increase to the employees? So the midpoint is exactly that, it's the midpoint between those two. That is scenario number two, and of course, as you go through the deck, each one of these scenarios, if you want to see how the employees paycheck, like, you know, it's taken away all the other numbers, what is the employee paycheck difference in each one of the scenarios? We have charts for the expanded plan, and we have charts for the base plans that y'all can look at. Scenarios three, four, and five, those kind of tie back into some of the things that I was saying earlier, which are a majority of the school districts on the state plan, you know, they base their budget off of the base network, so they set the dollar amount for premier, or whatever it is they're going to pay for premier employee only, or standard family. And then the employee actually pays the difference from the base to the, to the expanded networks. That's where us working with as many groups as we do and just knowing, you know, what that standard is, by and large, it's not every single group, but the majority of the public schools that are on the state health plan, the majority of them base their contribution strategy on the base network, and then the employees pay the differential. That was one of the things that we looked at when we were going through the refinement of these numbers, but that seemed to be, you know, just too much an abrupt change, you know, for one year. So that's what the next three scenarios are. So the next three scenarios are all using the midpoint on the base network, but to start to move things more in line with what other districts are doing across the state on the state health plan, where scenario number three is just decreasing the amount that we contribute to the expanded network by just 1%. Scenario number four is the midpoint on the base network and then decreasing what we contribute towards, from a percentage standpoint, there's still an increase, so the dollar amount still may be going up, we're just dialing it down one percentage at a time. And then scenario number five, again, is that midpoint and decreasing what we contribute towards, towards the expanded networks by 3%. So those were the six different scenarios. Of course, you see the budget impact, and again, as we, as we kind of move, you know, the midpoint, and then as we move the percentage, you can see that it stair steps down from a budget perspective. So we can look at the individual rate charts, I'm happy to answer any questions about the, you know, the process or the product that's in your hands, so I'll open it up and see if y'all have any questions.
Wes, I have one question. When you're looking at these numbers, is that on a 10 pay period or 12?
Everything here is monthly. We, we tend to, even though there's 10 pay periods, there's a conversion.
Yes.
In that, so we tend to list everything as a monthly cost.
So for our employees, it would actually be more than this, but they're already paying more than what that current state is anyways, because we deduct only 10 times, not 12.
Can I just, something that's kind of jumping out at me here that concerns me for our employees on the North End, and Sheila, you might know better to speak to this, since you're intimately familiar with insurance. I guess my biggest concern with, instead of just giving everyone the same percentage, would be those that are choosing the expanded network because they live on the North End and the hospital that's there is only included in the expanded. I kind of feel like we're making them pay more to be able to access their nearest hospital. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Okay.
Talking about just.
Talking about St. Chris.
I noticed that as well.
Yeah. The higher plan has it, but not, not, not the base. You're right. I was on the insurance.
Okay.
Forever.
Historically, Wes, has that been the difference, the tri-star facilities, has that been the difference? I have no idea.
Historically speaking, those are the facilities that, that are only in the expanded network. You know, when you look at the state, there's a lot of good health insurance companies out there. Blue Cross and Cigna, you know, tend to be the, the largest two. And when y'all made a move to the state, you did pick up, you know, a dual network option. You know, so that really, it does open things up. It's not, like you said, it's not perfect. You know, if employees feel like they need that expanded network because of the access to care, you know, that is one of the considerations. I've, I've been doing this for a long time and health insurance is one of those things where, you know, you want to make a decision where every single person does win. And it's, it's a lot of people and it's, it's tough to do that where, you know, it's, kind of take a step back sometimes and, and look at kind of the, everything as a whole. And of course, we've got that pesky budget that, you know, that we always have to stick within as well.
I do want to point out that when you, all of this doesn't mean much until you flip over and look at what the employee is actually paying. That, that's where they're going to look and that's where we're probably going to look to make the best decision. And when you look at option one, for example, it says employee and they're paying just for the employee now, not, not adding everybody else, 149.60. And they're talking about only going to 157.60. That, that's not bad. You know, if, if, lots of you don't have the wonderful insurance that our teachers have had and our employees have had, but this is a recruitment and a retention aspect. And so we want to make sure we look at that, but the increase is not terrible. That, that's the part that, that makes me happiest is we're not going to be taking any more money from our employees than absolutely necessary. So just that, but you need a chance to look at that and mull it over.
And didn't you say that you had this one prescription that your husband was taking?
With the retiree.
Okay.
Oh, that was with Rutherford County.
Okay.
But my husband did have a $12,000, was it $12,000, prescription and we paid nothing for it. So insurance is so important.
What was part of the motivation, if I remember, of us going to the state was the other plans were going crazy. I mean, it was like 17%, which our employees could not do that at all. So we, this is a much, much better, better plan.
It really is.
Yeah, because that's been the feedback we've gotten from the teachers is that this was a better plan, so. But nothing is always perfect.
Dr. Sullivan, perhaps?
Yeah.
You, you, you really, you know.
So one-
And it was a better plan for you, right?
One thing to call out real quick, and again, I, we hit it on just a second ago, but I just flipped to option one just to do some strict numbers to kind of show, because I think it's good for everybody to realize this. So if you flip over two pages from the health plan budget options, and I'm just using this as an example, so option one, employee monthly cost comparison, network P or OAP. And I went with employee. So that cost per month, again, is on a 12-month basis. That 2024 state premier, that 157.60, that would be if we were doing 12 months. We only do 10 months, so the actual employee would be $189.12 per month, not 157.60.
Say that again, Dr. Sullivan.
189.12, not 157. But again, this is how the state prepares their information based on a 12-month, because they, each district does either 10, 12, 26, who knows how they, they call them out. But our teachers or staff, again, didn't pay 149.60 this year. They would have paid more than that because, again, of the 10 to 12-month deductions. So if, when employees see this, know that this is on a 12-month one. And we do, this is something we deal with every single year.
Any other comments and questions? I think, I know you're not finished, but I, I do know we're going to have to take this and sit down and take a look at it.
Sure, absolutely. And if y'all need me to come back, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, after you've had a chance to digest. My role again in this is not to try to sway you one way or the other. It's just taking the familiarity with, you know, with what other groups across the state are doing and to model out different options for y'all to be able to consider, you know, and laying those options out in an organized fashion to where, you know, this many people can look at the same numbers and then come together on a consensus. So if you want to see, you know, additional numbers or have any additional questions, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer those. I will say that regardless, you know, regardless of what you do, I do think that there's a really big opportunity for the employees themselves to, to look at what they're participating in. Because the rates were higher when you were on the private plan, they went down even if you chose the expanded network. So there really wasn't a driving factor for people to make a decision off of the two. But if employees look at their hospitals, they look at their doctors and the people they go to are in the base networks, that's a great opportunity for them and a great opportunity for the county to, you know, to, to help control the budget, because again, you're not changing the coverage. It's the same coverage. It's just a matter of, you know, which facilities are, are in or out.
Dr. Sullivan? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you.
Do you have something else?
Yeah, so we have, we've looked at this quite a bit. So open enrollment begins for us is October 1st. And so October 1st, in order to give this in for employees, that's why we have it at the beginning of September board meeting. When I look at these, of course, I try to take all factors into account because I also don't feel like it is, is fair just to give the board six options and say, here, you guys choose. I feel like it's my responsibility to make somewhat of a recommendation. I think everyone knows, of course, I'm an employee with a very expensive family plan. So it would benefit me personally the most to say, let's just pass it all on to the county. But I don't think that's realistic. My recommendation on these and working with Brian and Dr. Anthony and looking at our budget is, is scenario four and five. So that's where my recommendation is. It is still a budget hit of 682,000 or 355,000. We did large increases, large salary this year, but it's not all the county taking it and not all of employees having to take it as well. And so with TISA growth, the number of kids we've added, that's something we can look at to try to recoup those differences.
Another thing we want to point out is that, and we've all heard this, is when you give a 5% raise and then your insurance went up 5% and everybody said, well, that wiped out my raise. It didn't because the 5% was on what your raise was and the other 5% was on what your insurance was on. So it doesn't wipe out your raise, folks. That's-
I would-
We've heard that a lot.
I would reiterate that, too.
Yeah.
Looking at the numbers here, you know, based on salary increases and, you know, how aggressive y'all got, these scenarios here, and that's why I like the very far right-hand column, because it takes into account what's the annual, right? So whether it's 10 or 12, it shows you the annual difference. And even any of these scenarios you pick would not eat up the salary increases that y'all have done.
Not near.
And I go back to, let's just look at option four. I think I just shared, so I have family, the most expensive plan you can because of our medical insurance, and that is still, if I divide that by 10, I'm still not paying what I was paying two years ago on our plan. So I'm still about $30 less than I was paying in 2021. So.
But we did have some runaway costs going on back-
Well, absolutely.
Yes, we should.
Ten years ago.
Yes.
I mean, it was 10%, 12%, 17% increases we was getting hit with. And at that time, we were not able to give good raises either. So there was some times where, yeah, the insurance did wipe out your, your raise. Now, fortunately, right now, that's not the case.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sullivan, number 11.
So number 11, curriculum instruction, tab four, curriculum instructions, CTE department would like to allocate approximately 15,000 of Perkins 2324 funds to support Rutherford Works RW ambassador leads at 22 of our middle and high schools. The purpose of the Rutherford Works Ambassador Leads program would be to develop the instructional capacity of teachers, counselors, and assistant principals within our district to support the Rutherford Works partnership. The leads will be responsible for attending in-person or virtual meetings and implementing the following opportunities at their schools, work ethic distinction, youth science, work-based learning, industry tours, college and career fair, eighth grade career pathway fair, and assist with the ACT work keys assessment. allocations or each participant receives a $50 stipend for attendance and participation in professional development sessions led by Rutherford Works and the CTE curriculum instruction department. And I believe this is at least year three or four that we've, we've continued with this. And it does come out of Perkins basic grant funds.
Questions or comments? Number 11. I thought I saw Tyra Pilgrim here, but she may have slipped out.
Yeah, we have-
Didn't know if she wanted to add anything.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you. Number 12.
Number 12, we move on to the shed building portion of our agenda. Engineering construction, tab five, request for black and middle track shed. Principal Jessica Jackson is requesting to purchase a shed to store track and cross-country equipment. The project cost is 6,500 and to be funded through track and cross-country funds. Engineering construction has reviewed the request and recommends approval.
Questions or comments? There are none. Next.
Request for black and middle baseball nets. Principal Jessica Jackson has requested to purchase nets for the baseball backstops to increase fan protection. The cost for the requested nets will be from the school baseball funds. Engineering construction has reviewed the request and recommends approval.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Next.
Request for Rockville High football turf. Principal Steve Lukers requesting, again, the process of writing funds for the installation of a turf football practice surface, or turf football surface. We talked about practice so much over there, I just added the word practice, I'm sorry. The anticipated cost at this time is 1 million and will be funded through donations and fundraising. This request is at no cost to the board. Engineering construction has reviewed this request and finds it to be similar to other schools' request and recommends approval.
Have any questions or comments? Next.
The engineering and construction department's been working with our staff and county finance provided design and construction schedule to help the county facilitate the funding cycle for the Beatty property. The schedule is presented for approval to send to Health and Education, the Commission for Approval for Funding. We're requesting to begin site grading of the building pad in the fall this year and begin the balance of construction in March of 2024. And we discussed this at our last meeting as well, just as FYI. But this gets us moving to hit the bid in December, hopefully approve a bid in January and then go to Health and Ed and Full County Commission in February. We had Health and Ed last Tuesday and they've been briefed on this schedule as well.
So if we have the bid in January?
Bid is January 16th, 18th? I think it's the 18th, so Thursday?
18th, I think. Hold on, I'll tell you.
And then we'll hopefully have a board meeting that evening to propose so that it can go to Health and Ed on Tuesday to approve and then to budget the next Thursday and then full commission the second weekend in February. We have about a one-month window that we could make the March window if we needed to, but that, anything further is going to delay us opening that by August of '25. And that's still pretty aggressive to get it open by August of '25.
And then they will go to bond market in March?
Whenever they choose to, because they can do the interim bond or lead borrowing agency, so that, that goes up to them.
But we will have the funding for this, for the design.
Once they approve it, then it's up to them to define the funding.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just thrilled that we're able to start this process and get this going.
Yes.
Don't leave us, Mr. Lee. You've got a lot to do.
My wife said I'm not going anywhere.
Comments or questions? Number 13, insurance update.
Anything else, Dr. Anthony?
Director's update.
So just a couple of quick things. I might go ahead and move open position update by school to discuss during the director's update, if that's okay? You guys have a new list. Thank you, Dr. Anthony and our principals for getting this compiled. You'll see that we're down to 28.5, I believe, was the count of certified positions that are open. Some of these are new positions, like Rockville Middles, for example, those three are new positions that they were granted because of a, an extremely large sixth-rate class that just jumped. So they're not all positions that have been sitting out there the whole time. It was in the mid-40s two weeks ago. Classified, we're down to 57. We're in the mid-80s. I think we were at 86 two weeks ago. So definitely moving in the right direction and for a district our size, we're probably always going to have a dozen or two dozen openings just for how big we are. No opening's great, but I, I definitely feel good about where we are and thank our team for that work. Couple other quick things. We did a report and it was my fault for not sharing with everybody. Smyrna Middle School received a grant for their music program. I don't know, Mr. Evans, Ms. Sharps, anybody have details about that one that they want to share off the top of their head?
Just off the top of my head, they received $20,000. Channel 2 is going to come out and do a story about them tomorrow, so big, big news for the school and they're very happy about it.
So that was great. I also want to just kind of echo what people said earlier. So as director of schools, I don't get involved in the board chairman election stuff, but I want to thank Ms. Sharp. It's been a pleasure serving with you the last year and I feel kind of strange not to went over there and I said, you have to help me through this portion, so. And I forward to Ms. Breton, I'm working with it as well. So thank the board for their work. Last thing to hit on is we have our zoning meetings that are about to begin. So we have zoning, that is going to have our media release on the 7th. That is not going to be when we release maps to the public. You guys are going to get maps first. So I'll have some, some maps for you on Thursday. Know that those maps, when we're talking about those, this is not the final product because we have to get principal input, community input. This is just a draft of what our team and RSP has worked for. When you're doing with zoning, of course, our principals' roles kind of protect their turf, so I'm sure you'll hear from principals about what they don't like about it, but we're trying to do this as a district-wide. And I encourage you to look at from a district-wide, too, but we'll work on our, with the messaging with our principals as well. And then we have our September 18th, 19th, 20th. 18th is at the central office for our public meeting. The 19th is at Stewart's Creek High School and the 20th is at Siegel High School, all of those at 6:30. Going to be a great time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Rosales, do you have anything? Are you going to add something on Thursday night?
I can say something tonight and not say anything Thursday night. So we met with the, the state delegation a couple of weeks ago and there were concerns that were drafted, I mean, there were concerns that were, that were shared and I've kind of compiled those concerns and I've sent them over to Dr. Trastine and Dr. Sullivan and have them look at the email that I'm proposing to send to the advisor for Governor Lee. So he's waiting on that, so they're waiting on that. And so as soon as that is sent, they take a look at it, review it and approve it, then I will send forward it to the governor's advisors on Friday.
Thank you, ma'am. We're now open for general discussion. See if anyone has anything they'd like to add.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I had printed out this page to you guys just to kind of start a conversation among the board to talk about some options for getting some help with looking for potential areas for schools. We do a lot of talking about what we need and I would love to see us take an initiative to actually take a step forward. I had discussed these with Jeff Reed and talked about what options the board had available in this capacity. So I just kind of compiled this and went over some of the, the different scenarios and what they might look like. And I'd like to get it put on the agenda, not for Thursday, but our following, to take a vote on and start that process moving forward. I think it's time that we have somebody in place that is dedicated and purposely looking, someone that has expertise and experience and can really kind of help us push forward and navigate through some of that to potentially obtain some land.
You want that to put, be put on the agenda, the last meetings of this month? Is that correct?
Yes, please. I also had talked to Jeff Reed about creating a process and I was waiting to the policy committee to deliver a vote, to present those policies. So I will like what I had requested because I talked to, I had requested this last month about creating a form- about creating a formality of how we do procure, look for, and review it, and how that is managed. And so, yes, I would like that to be included, since we're starting that conversation about what is looking, who's looking for what or whatever. Then I would like what I had proposed also, not delay it and wait till policy committee just go ahead and bring it forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Truth of the matter is, we're going to need land every year.
You're right.
And so if we don't have people dedicated to finding it, then the developers are going to find it, they're going to get it, and we're going to be stuck.
Yep.
So let's get a move on it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I bring up real quick about land? The one thing we do need to do is that that line item in the budget is pretty much empty right now, so we will need to either move funds from fund balance or do some other things or to get funding for land.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Separately, can we get an update on Church Street Building?
Yes. Trey, do you have an update on Church Street? Oh, everybody's just pointing around.[1737.16][1737.16][laughing]
The closing schedule, the week after next, to close on the property, it's going well with the lease terminations as we were last reporting to the board, so there's no hiccups there. So here in a couple weeks, we should have closed on the property.
Awesome. So the tenants are moving out as
Yes.
predicted. Okay.
Did we hear, I'm sorry, did we hear from that one attorney that we hadn't heard from?
Not heard from that one attorney.
Good grief.
Hard to hear from attorneys. I'm just joking.
There's a single office.
Are you saying by his
It's one office. We can work on it for a while, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? General discussion. If not, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We are adjourned.